Is the flag ready? Salute.
I'd like to allegiance to the flag of the United States.
All right, just a few housekeeping issues this morning. We're going to take on our budget hearing first, so we're going to allow final public comment on the budget hearing and then we will close down the public portion of the budget. Then we will bring the budget discussion back to the dais for a vote for adoption and approval. So right now, we will go out to the public for any comment on the budget. You have two minutes.
Good morning, Council. Marina Magdaleno, Operating Engineers Local 39. Do I have to say my address? Anyway, I wanted to talk, address the issue about the trash cops and because it is part of the budget, the three positions that are going to be part of solid, you know, that will be paid for out of the solid waste budget. I have no issue with that. And earlier in the year, we had several meetings with the employees and with the department director about issues that are happening out there when, you know, trash, on trash days, which is right now Monday through Friday, and what happens in terms of folks that go through it, that rifle through it, and some of the difficulties and challenges that the employees face when they're out there and how it affects the neighborhoods. My only issue, when I read the article, was at the very, towards the end, that while this is going to be paid 100% out of public utilities, that there may be times when the police is not going to be working 100% for this issue, that they may be called out. And I don't believe that that is fair, and I also don't believe that that's how it should be, because as you all know, utility money is enterprise money, and it shouldn't be mixed in with the general fund. And so if they're not going to be focusing 100% on that, not to say that if there's a crime that's committed in the vicinity while all of this is going on, I'm not saying that that shouldn't be happening, but I think that the focus needs to be 100% on this, just as airports, we have police officers at airports that are also enterprise, and FACS that are also enterprise, and I really feel that the dedication needs to be there 100%. And if not, then there needs to be a deduction. Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to comment on the budget?
Hi, Dee Barnes, Fresno City Employees Association. I just want to say, I'm really thrilled that the finances of the city are looking so much better. I would just like to say a couple of comments. I know council members, Esmeralda Soria and Oliver Baines, spoke extensively on May 14th regarding the city taking a more balanced approach towards restoring services and preparing for a future economic downturn. I agree with that. I believe even individuals should have money in savings. However, I'm a little concerned because I don't believe that we're really committed to taking a balanced approach. When I read the Reserve Management Act and the changes that were made, I have a lot of concerns about that, especially when you look at the last couple of years and how quickly we were able to pay off the internal loans, how quickly we have been able to put money aside and still restore some services. But I would just encourage you to really take a look at that. One other thing, as the city is recovering, as other agencies are recovering, as the community is recovering, and people are starting to see some increases in their pay, I don't see that happening with my members. And we are some of the lowest paid employees in the city. I have admin clerks making slightly over $2,000 a month that have seen their health insurance in the last, you know, since 2002, go from nothing to close to $300 a month. That is a huge hit for them. And they are the ones that took a 2% furlough cut for three years without complaining, without fighting the city. No lawsuits were filed. We supported the city. My members were also the ones that in 2011 took a 3% salary cut voluntarily. We gave 3% of our salary back for one year and 2% back for another. So I would just encourage you to really think about some of those things. Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on the budget? All right, seen none. We'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brandau.
Council President, then, are we, are we making comments on the final budget right now then?
Right. Right now, what we're going to do, if we have any final budget amendments, we can make those right now. We can make final comments on the budget, and after that, we will vote.
Because I'd like to make my final comments if this is the budget we're voting on, but if there's amendments. So I think maybe we should do that first. What do you, what do you think?
Yeah, if we have any final budget motions, then we'll accept those now. I have one of the council member punched up. If you want to allow the rest of the conversation to occur, and then come back to you for final comments.
Yeah, if you could, because I, if there's something comes up, I want to punch in for final comments, so whenever you're ready for that.
Sure. Councilmember Soria.
I want to wait till we do the final, final, final.
All right, all right. So everybody wants to make the final, final. There's, so I'll make one, one final motion to that we put $50,000 in the contingency fund for consultants in the city attorney's budget.
I'm second.
$50,000. Contingency, yeah, contingency for consultant. All right. I see no other motion, so that seems to be, to be it. I'll take a vote on that motion. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Councilmember Brandau.
Okay, now we're on final comments.
We are, we are on, okay, you can make a motion.
So I wanted to make a motion, and this is going to be a motion, and I know that I've been talking to the administration, and we've been working with Scott Moser on this issue, and I'll see how I, maybe you can help me make my motion. But, so the issue has been, we've been working on the project with First Five, and one of the issues that I believe I've raised before, in terms of our first and second floor bathrooms, we don't have any baby changing tables. We've also been looking at, in the second floor, doing a family-friendly atmosphere room where when there's children that are visiting us or families that are visiting us in long, in long council meetings, they have an opportunity to be, to have this space and also encourage mothers that may be nursing to have a space where they can nurse while they are visiting us here at City Hall. So we've been working with First Five to get us a grant to do the work, and so we've submitted an applicant, or the grant to First Five, I believe, last week. We've been diligently working with the administration and the department with Scott Moser. And so I wanted to just make a motion. It's not going to be anything that we have to, like an extra expenditure within the budget, but we do have to expend the money before so that we can get reimbursed. And so given that we are passing the budget, I thought maybe it would be appropriate to do a motion now to be able to expend these monies to get reimbursed.
Is there a dollar amount?
I believe, let me see, up to $12,000.
So the motion is to appropriate up to $12,000, which would be funded from First Five or other grants?
Yeah, and will, would be reimbursed back. So that would be my motion, to expend up to $12,000 to do the work and to begin doing the work and then get reimbursed by First Five.
All right, I'll second that motion. Okay, no comment on it. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. All right, so now we will take final, final. Council President Emeritus Brandau.
Thanks, Council President. All right, so it's finally the day where we're voting on the final, on the final budget, and it's been a little bit of a process like it always is, but I think I agree with Dee that it was a, it's good that we're in the position that we're in this time. It's for the first time in a long time, we get to debate a little bit about where to spend money and where best to allocate money. So that is a lot better debate to have than what we've had in years past. So I appreciate everybody that's been a part of the budget, of course, our administration and the staff for the budget and Finance Department, Jane and Scott, Sharon, Henry, Alma, Pedro, and Elise. They've all done great work trying to get us prepped and delivering this budget. And so I just have a few final comments. I'm very glad that this budget, and when you're going to restore something, I think it's proper in the city of Fresno to start with public safety. So I'm very glad that we're going to be adding 43 new police officers. I think almost every council member feels, feels relieved that we're going to get some help out on the front line fighting crime in our community. And so I'm very glad for that. I'm very proud to be voting for that. Also, I believe that also with public safety, we're beginning to turn around and add a few pieces to Fresno Fire Chief. I'm very glad to be voting for the different things that we've added to your department personnel-wise and equipment-wise. And so I'm, I'm very glad to be voting on the public safety aspects. I think that's the foundation of this budget. Then right beyond that, there are a few other items that came up continually through debate up here at the dais and also from the public. I'd like to comment about a couple of those, and then I'll be all wrapped up. We talked a lot about parks in this budget, and early on, there was something that I felt wasn't quite right, was an ad campaign inside the city of Fresno that pitted North Fresno versus South Fresno, and trying to try to create the haves and have-nots, a kind of a feel to it. With the, when I was reading the budget, I was pleasantly surprised that we were spending as much money as we were on parks in the city of Fresno. And so to have an ad campaign saying, "We're not doing enough about parks," and certain segments of the city are better off on parks than others, I thought was real goofy. I had a hard time with it. Back at the council, when we came back to council after that ad campaign hit the community, Councilman Brand and the administration both had taken the time to show that a lot of the information in that ad campaign was not accurate. And so as somebody that represents North Fresno, you know, I took a mild defense to it, I guess I would say. We were spending about $5.8 million on parks this year. It's a very weird year to attack the city of Fresno for not doing much about parks. But within that $5.8 million is a lot of deferred maintenance, about $4 million, I believe, and all of that deferred maintenance is, are going to parks and projects south of Shaw Avenue. So I was a little, I thought, I thought it a little strange that we had that campaign going on, but it is what it is. I'm glad that we're spending money on parks, and I'm proud to cast my vote to support parks. I voted to support Universal Access Park. Now that's changed its name to Inspiration Park. Is that right? That's the name now? Well, when I voted for it, it was Universal Access. Oh, you're still up in the air about the name?
If someone wants to write a check, we'll name it something else.
Oh, okay, 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 cool. I like, I like Inspiration. That's a good one. I voted for Martin Ray Riley Park. I got a chance to vote for that park. Both of those parks are South Fresno, or South of Shaw. Then we have a park coming in downtown, in this area, in Council President Baines' area. So the three, the next three completed parks, Martin Ray Riley, Mural District Park, or whatever that's going to be called, and Inspiration Park, if that's its final name, but the Universal Accessible Park, all South of Shaw, all of my votes, thumbs up on those parks, and I'm, I'm proud of those votes. And I will be voting for a lot of parks in the future, and I believe in parks. Up here at the dais, over and over again, I've used the examples of my own life. I use Woodward Park at least on a weekly basis. And so I've talked about that for different reasons, for water reasons and some other reasons. So I'm a big believer in parks. I did make a motion, and it was added to the budget last week about some money spent on roads. And what it was, was the administration had, inside the budget, added $2.1 million divided by council district to fix little neighborhood roads, not the big stuff that we all need fixed, that we all travel on, but some little neighborhood roads that need attention. Neighborhoods, and last year, we had done the same thing last year, and this year, the administration had $2.1 million for that, and I made a motion to add another $1.4 million, or just $200,000 per council district to fix potholes and more stuff in our neighborhoods. And so I was very proud to add money for roads. When it comes to parks and roads, and I might have my numbers a little off, I might, I might call Scott Moser, I might just ask him to nod his head if he thinks this is correct. We have about $249 million of deferred maintenance in roads within our city. So in our city, we have a quarter of a billion dollars worth of road repairs that need to be done. Is that about right, Scott? 249? Is that, okay? And in this budget, even with, even with the additional $1.4 million, so out of 249 million, adding 1.4 is great, but you know, little bit. So we got up to about $11 million spent in this budget against a $249 million problem. So it was about 4%. On parks, Manuel told us that we have about $9.6 million in deferred maintenance. Now, there's a caveat there because our parks master plan study might show more. It probably will show that we have more deferred maintenance in parks, and I don't know what that number is. And I'll be happy to deal with that number when I have it, but right now, we have $9.6 million, and we're spending, out of the 5.8, some of it's going to new parks, but about $4 million is going to deferred maintenance. So we have these two problems, streets and parks. And on the streets, we're going about 4%. I've got the blah, blah, blah word already. On the streets, we're fixing about 4% of the problem. On parks, we're about 40 to 45% of the problem we're tacking in one budget. So I just wanted to get that ratio clear. I support parks, but I, but when I talk to citizens in District 2, usually roads and road surfaces are coming up, potholes, problems like that are coming up a little more often than parks. So I wanted to just say finally, that I do support the idea of having a reserve in the city of Fresno. When we had the economic downturn, our next door neighbor, the city of Clovis, had a reserve and we didn't. We struggled. We had to lay off a lot of good people without a reserve. And sometimes, when you lay off people, you end up just cutting in, you're cutting into your own ability to perform. And now we're trying to restore some of that. But so for me, I liked the mayor's editorial that was in the Fresno Bee this last weekend, that talked about how valuable a reserve is. So I do agree with the mayor of Fresno on how valuable that reserve is. And by, while I'm on that, I'm going to say that I think she's done a good job overall with this budget. Yeah, there's things that I personally would change, probably all of the council members would feel the same way, but I do believe in saving, and I do believing, I do believe in saving, in spending that money once you've saved some money. Now, cities are not saving institutions, so I don't think you just save and save and save and save and save. But if you, once you reach your reserve target, then you've met your reserve target, then you go and you begin to spend more of that money. But right now, Fresno's goal, struggling to hit that reserve target, but I'm supportive of that. Anyway, Council President, I just wanted to say that, that I support the budget, and I'll be voting yes for the budget.
Well, thank you there, Council, Councilmember Brandau. Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. So I also want to echo some of the same remarks that were made by my council colleague just now in terms of the budget. This is my first budget, and so I will say that in terms of what I see as a whole, I am very pleased to be here during this time where we do have an opportunity to invest a little bit more and restore many of the services, look at restoring our older neighborhoods with additional resources. And so I, overall, in terms of the budget, I think that we're moving in a very positive direction, just as mentioned by my colleague. Obviously, there were some things that I would have liked to have seen, just a little bit more investment. Yes, I do believe in having a reserve. I think that it is important, just like any of us in our own homes, we, you know, typically also have a savings account, and so I believe that for those hard times, we need to be prepared. And I do commend the administration and the mayor for thinking of putting some funds aside, and I do believe that we're doing a good job in terms of meeting the 10% goal that, that we have. We see in this budget at the end of the year, we will meet that, that goal. I will say that in terms of, just on the parks issue, I will mention it because it was brought up by, by my colleague, that I, I did personally believe that we could have done a little bit more for, for parks, given the, the unexpected funds that, that did come in. As you guys know, I proposed an additional $1 million, half a million for deferred maintenance, and half a million would be for additional expansion of recreational programs. And I will say that in, in this year's budget, there's about $600,000 allocated for recreational programs, but all those monies are CDBG funds. So what that means, it means that those recreational programs are restricted to CDBG areas. And so what that means is they're generally in the southern part of the city. And yes, we know that, that there's great needs in southern part of the city, so I think that's why we see, we see the concentrated recreational programs in those areas. My, my attempt in, in bringing some additional funds was to ensure that the entire city, other neighborhoods that can't benefit from CDBG areas, actually had the opportunity to expand those, those programs in the, in those neighborhoods. Anyway, that, that issue is, you know, will be set aside for now, and hopefully at midterm, at mid-year review, we're able to look at additional funds to expand. I will say, I know that my council colleague also mentioned that the parks that we are going to be investing in in terms of deferred maintenance are primarily, or all of them, South of Shaw, and even the new parks are South of Shaw. But in terms of the deferred maintenance ones, I believe, and maybe someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but the majority of the deferred maintenance for these parks are happening because of the areas where they're at in terms of the CDBG areas. I don't know if that's correct, and maybe someone can, can clarify that. Manuel?
They're, they're, I don't know if I'd call them CDBG. They're based on income and levels from Prop 84.
Yeah, so in, in terms of the income level, so that's, that is why we are investing the majority of these deferred maintenance in those, those parks, because they are restricted funding. So we couldn't use them in some of the other much more higher income neighborhoods. So I just wanted to clarify.
Excuse me, council member, but we also received some sizable amounts of money from Proposition 1C, which was also focused South of Shaw.
Yeah, so we just, just to be clear, just so everyone knows, the majority of the funds being used to invest in these parks south of the city are because they're restricted funds. So my intent, again, with the $1 million, half a million deferred maintenance, would have opened it up to other parks that are not only South of Shaw, just, just for the record. And what was the other issue that I wanted to bring up? So just, you know, I, I know that we're all up here, we've heard in terms of the statements, we're all committed in terms of our investing in parks. I personally think that they're, they're equally as important as our public, our infrastructure, our roads. I also voted to support for the 1.4 additional funds. I have a lot of neighborhoods in my, in my district that are in real high need of maintenance and repairs of sidewalks and potholes, and so I'm, I'm glad to be able to support that, but I also still believe that our Parks Department deserves an additional investment because it's not only about the, the investing in the assets that we have, but it's also looking at the, at the benefits that come with it. It's benefits for our children, for our seniors. We know that if we keep our children busy, we will, that will mean that they'll stay out of trouble. So that addresses some of the crime issues, or can address some of the crime issues that we have in some of these neighborhoods. Also, we know that they provide economic development. When people are looking to move to our city, they are looking at the various amenities that we have in our city. So if there are parks in disrepair, or if we don't have as many parks in certain areas of the city, people look at that. I am sure that when a husband is trying to move here with his family and he has kids, they're going to be looking at that. And so my, my goal and intent in really looking at additional investments was, you know, because I do see in terms of the, the value of economic development, of benefits to our young children and our youth and our seniors in this community. But again, I do believe, I will say that this budget does a, a good job in, in terms of investing. And so I hope that in, hopefully in the next six months, when we do get an opportunity to come back and see if there's any additional funds that come in, that we look at, at the possibility of, of investing additionally to our parks, so that we are expanding recreational activities throughout our city, not just South of Shaw. Yes, I know I represent my, a district South of Shaw, but I also think that other areas of, of the city could benefit from expansion of recreational programs and as well for deferred maintenance, so that we do maintain the assets that we have in our community. The other issue that I did want to bring up, I know that there was comments in regards to the cops being funded by our Department of Public Utilities, and so I, I agree with some of those comments that were made. We just need to make sure that we are following Prop 218 guidelines and that the services that we're providing are proportionate to the costs being incurred. So I just want to make sure that that is clear. I know that we're using three sources of funding. Is that correct, Bruce?
Yes, and it's really, it's, it's no different than we've done for, I don't know how many years now with FACS. FACS have been funding for officers for probably 10-plus years. So anytime they do like a positive time accounting, if they get pulled off to do, spend a lot of time on something unrelated, then we account for that. So this is going to be no different than we do with DPU. It's, we have the process in place, and we'll just implement what we've already done with FACS.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, because that was one of the questions that I had raised to our department to ensure that we are providing proportional services to the charges in terms of, and compliant with Prop 218. So I just want to say that overall, again, I, I am encouraged by the investments. I know that adding the additional officers to our community is going to be very beneficial. Also, beginning to invest in our fire department, I'm a big supporter. I know that in, in District 1, we will be seeing an additional company, so I know that that will increase our, our daily minimum staffing and also help with our So I know that that will increase our daily minimum staffing and also help with our response time. So I'm encouraged by what I see, and I look forward to supporting this budget today.
Council member Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I really wanted to thank the administration, the department heads and their respective staffs for putting together a good budget. I'll tell you that in past years, when we didn't have as many computers around here, you could drive by on a Saturday or Sunday and you'd see the parking lot full of vehicles with folks working on the budget. Now, I guess you'd do that from home. But I know that you spent many a Saturday and Sunday working on trying to get the budget put together and completed. So I want to thank you all for doing all the hard work and putting together this particular budget. I do want to say that, you know, when we first, in our office, when we first got a look at the budget, you know, it was just kind of like, to some degree, opening up a little Christmas present, because what I saw is that, you know, first, for the first time in some years, we finally had some of the things that were needed for just the basic needs for the city. And you hear a lot about the needs that we have south of Shaw and that type of thing, and rightly so. But what I saw in this budget was that there was, there was monies in there that took care of the entire city. It took care of the entire city. And so everybody got a, each council district and the city as a whole got a little piece of what was needed to help. And one of the things that I, that we, as I stated early on, that, you know, we've had a lot of different budgets, and in our office, we give them different names. And I recall one year, we had one that we called it the Budget from Hell, because it was just a terrible budget, because there wasn't any money. And so this year, we called it the Restoration Budget, because it brought in a lot of the basic needs that we needed. And it's taking care to some degree in bringing our departments a little bit, a little bit more with our needs, with the police department, the fire department, public works, you know, the basic needs, has been the potholes, the streets, our parks. I want to, you know, thank you for recommending the 677,000 for southeast Fresno for Mosqueta and for Pilibos Park, and bringing those, helping out with that, working with Fresno Unified as well, too. This year, opening up three of the swimming pools at Edison, Fresno High, and Roosevelt. And now also continuing to work on opening up some of the green space at the schools. So that's really helpful in taking us forward. Also, the, to do the parks study plan, I want to thank the mayor's office for working with our office on putting, working on that, and Bruce, your office as well. It's something that's long overdue and looking forward to getting it, get done. Also, the other big help in, for us in the southeast part of the city is the additional code enforcement officers that are really going to be helpful there. It's long overdue that we get more folks out on the streets. And as stated earlier by some of my colleagues, it's not, it's not a budget that's 100% that everybody's going to be happy. There's going to be some things that, that aren't, you know, don't fulfill all of our needs, but it's, I believe this year's been, it's been a good budget. And also, I want to tell you that, you know, adding stability to the administration with our Parks Department, Mr. Molinero, and our FACS with Mr. Marshall, has really stabilized in those two departments. You did a good job, Bruce, but I mean, they got, you know, they got to do what they got to do. But we appreciate working with them as well, and also, you know, they're able to make the decision rather than, than having to wait a while to get a decision. And I'm looking forward to Jensen and Willow having a little bus through there, that area. But I want to, I want to thank you and all the department heads and management staff for doing a good budget. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council member Brand.
Let me also start out by thanking the entire city team, the budget team. And I realize the enormous task it is every year to prepare a budget, and you guys did a pretty good job. Just briefly, you know, this is the seventh year, seventh budget, and finally, there's daylight in front of us. We've made some really difficult decisions. The organization itself contracted by nearly 1,000 positions. Services were stretched to really minimal, if not below adequate levels for a number of times. But through it all, through some very difficult votes and very difficult decisions, we managed to keep the city solvent. We got past the looming bankruptcy, which was a real possibility at one time. And I want to thank all my colleagues and the mayor and the city manager for, you know, during that period of time, finding the resolution and the foresight and the wisdom to make the right decisions to keep the city solvent. On this budget, you know, we're in the process of rebuilding and restoring our core services. And I know, member Baines, I agree on this, that there's still a long way to go in terms of finding the funding to adequately fund all the different departments. But when you look at our core services, it's always at the top of the list, for me at least, is going to be the police services. And the entire city's been under, you know, a strain. We've, over the years, fought really almost battles with gangs, and our chief has done a phenomenal job in containing the anarchy. But, you know, crime is all over the city. It's not confined to one area. I saw some letter to the editor where they want, or one of the, I'm sorry, one of the letters we got on our input, that somebody wanted to take all the police new positions out of northeast and stick them out there. And I appreciate the sentiment, but we need police everywhere, northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest, absolutely essential. And the challenge with the 43 positions will be, can we bring those in faster than we lose people as we go along the way, which has been a real problem on attrition. The fire department has been, everybody knows, has been at bare minimum levels, had several fires where we've got, had to have outside help come in. You know, we're adding a company, adding, of course, slowly rebuilding a department that really declined over the, you know, was at a peak, I believe, in the 1980s, and over time, declined. And now, you know, this recession brought it back down, so we want to restore our fire department. It's really important. And of course, the public works element, as member Brando had mentioned, on streets at 220-plus million dollars, we're adding about, what, $3.5 million a year, 2%, less than 2%. So we're taking a dent at that, but I believe still that we need to identify a long-term infrastructure recovery program to make sure this city is viable 10 or 20 years from now. The parks, of course, was a big focus this year, and I applaud the mayor and city manager for their efforts to bring out, at least to my seven years, probably the biggest increase in parks, at $5.8 million. And I'll be the first one to admit that we have a long, long way to go. And I want to thank my fellow council member, Soria, for her passion and her innovativeness. We can always agree on everything, but I respect your point of view and your passion. And I think we all, we all want to get in the same endpoint, it's how we get there sometimes that makes the difference. But, you know, we can always blend our skills together here and try to find what's best for the city. And just a few comments on the reserve, and I, you know, I wrote the Reserve Management Act a few years ago. I've said this before, but had that act actually been implemented back in 2000 before all the turmoil developed, essentially putting 2% or 3% aside every year, when we could have put at least that much or more, we probably would have had, when I started in 2009, probably close to $16 million, instead of in essence being in a hole about $40 million. That would have been a huge swing. $100 million would have prevented a lot of the massive layoffs and decreases in our services. And so with this budget, we've, you know, we've paid off over the last two years, and again, thank my colleagues, administration, the $36 million internal loans. With this budget, we'll be up to $16 million by the end of the year. But right now, as we sit right now, I believe we're at $4 million on our reserve. One payroll period, one payroll period is $8 million. This shows you how precarious we are. And again, you've got a 300 million budget, and you're still, even on this aggressive way, we're trying to improve, and we're still only at really 50%. And as I mentioned before, there's zero funding for the contingency reserve, which is supposed to be 5% or $15 million. Zero funding on the technology reserve, the facilities, the pensions. There's a lot of things out there that I believe we need to address, you know, and it's one step at a time. And as we recover, it's always a measured approach where you try to be financially judicious in how you set up your reserves, your cash flows. At the same time, we recognize the tremendous need in the community across the board for all the services that we are vital to our community to make us whole. And I think we're on that path to recovery. And my seven years here, I don't believe we've ever had a 7-0 vote on the budget. So I don't know where people are going to vote today, but I would be, I'd be a great statement of unity. We've worked out our differences, we've tried to do the best we can. We came up with, we all feel in the end wasn't exactly what we wanted, but it pretty much got most of the items done. So I think a 7-0 vote would really look good, but I'm not going to make any predictions on that. And just one final comment, and this is on parks, that I believe we need to take extra efforts to find funding, and this would go to anything, through foundations, through engaging local business in the business council, to find maybe sponsors for parks, not only to do the capital, but mainly the maintenance stuff. And I know there's alternate funding sources out there that have never been fully utilized, including new markets tax credits, which not only include capital projects, they include maintenance of trails. So there's a lot of, and I'll get into it later, a lot of other sources out there. So with that, I'd like, on the city attorney, on the motions, do we make them one at a time or all at once on the budget motions?
It's council discretion, but you can make one motion to approve all of the budget-related items.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as outlined in our package, and all six or seven of the different resolutions to formally adopt the fiscal year 2016 budget. And again, a giant step for the city, moving forward to recovering and restoring core services. Thank you.
Seconded by council member Olivier. Council member Capriello.
Thank you. I want to express my gratitude as well to all the co-employees that have been involved with this budget process. We've all had a common goal, and that's for the greater good of Fresno. So I want to thank the co-employees that are in the audience here, in the building, those out in the streets working right now, from police and fire right on down the line. I also want to thank my co-employees in the mayor's office, Bruce, Renee, and everyone that's working in the mayor's office. I want to thank them, because they're co-employees as well. And of course, our city attorney, our clerk, and most of all, I want to thank my co-employees that are sitting here at the dais. And it was great working through these ups and downs, these different issues. I think we reached a pretty good goal in the final analysis. We've got a ways to go, we have a mid-year budget that we can make further adjustments. But I think as a co-employee effort by the entire city of Fresno, it's pretty, it was a pretty good budget process. So as far as individual comments from each of my colleagues, I would just say ditto, 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 and ditto. Thank you very much.
Council member Quintero.
One last comment and on the thank yous. I want to also thank our city attorney and his staff for working with us, answering a lot of questions, clarifying a lot of the process for us, and also the city clerk's office for keeping up with everything that's moving. But lastly, Mr. President, I wanted to thank you for your leadership. It's, it was a smooth process in getting things done, and I want to really thank you for that. Thank you.
All right. Looks like we don't have any other council members punched up, so I'll make my brief comments. And I'm going to start out by echoing council member Capriello with a lot of ditto's. I can't really, everything that I would have said has been said, but I just wanted to express my appreciation to certainly the city staff, administration, for really bringing forth what I thought was a really good budget. And, you know, council member Brand talked about those times where it hasn't always been a 7-0 on the budget. Well, I've been the lone standout a couple of times. So I'm here to tell you today, council member Brand, that I will be supportive of this year's budget. And I'm hoping that we can get a 7-0, too, because I know we've been calling it kind of the Restoration Budget, and I'm going to take kind of a different spin on that and say that this is the Moving in the Right Direction budget for me. I think we all agree that we've turned a significant corner in Fresno, but we are, we're far from where we want to be. But we are, we should be encouraged that we're going in the right direction. And there were a couple of times when we were literally hanging on by a thread in the not-too-distant past. So this is the right direction for me. And I'm very happy and proud to be supportive of the budget. A lot of things that are near and dear to my heart are included in this budget. And I think, want to thank Bruce personally for that, too. There are some things that, you know, we talk about parks, I kind of feel like you and I have been in that discussion for the last four years pretty heavily, and maybe not as public as everyone else, but I know where your heart is in that. So I want to thank you personally for really, the last few years, moving that discussion to where it is today, because I know you got a lot to do with that. And so with that, really, those are my comments. I'm supportive. Ditto the sentiment of my colleagues. This is a budget I can personally support. So with that, we'll call for a vote. And you know what, we'll do it electronically, just for the sake of doing it electronically. So yes is to support the budget, no is not. All right. Council member Brand, if you look on the screen, it's 7-0. All right, thank you, guys. All right, we'll now move on to our second item of the day. We have the actions, we're at 9:00 AM, number one.
Council president.
Oh, I'm sorry, council member.
The point of order. I'd like to just invite anybody in order to celebrate the passage of the budget. Tomorrow, Manuel, they could join us at the Community Science Workshop newly reopened in District Two in Highway City, right off of State Avenue, 5140 North State Avenue. And come out and join us in the morning, 10:30 tomorrow morning, right, Manuel? And anybody watching on cable is welcome to join us as well as we open up a new community center.
All right, fantastic. All right, so we will move on to our 9:00 AM, number one, the actions pertaining to the city of Fresno 2015 Program Year Consolidated Plan. I think we have staff here for that. I think we've called the item, whenever you're ready.
Good morning, council, sorry. Jennifer Clark, Development and Resource Management. This morning, the first item before you is the adoption of the consolidated plan, which as you recall from the last couple of meetings, we talked about as our strategic vision for how we will allocate the four federal program sources. We've had a number of questions that have come up in our meetings with each of you, and I wanted to talk a little bit, very briefly, about how we can incorporate some additional input that you've had in the process. One of the questions related to the removal of the priority areas on page 112 of the Redline version, which talked about geographic prioritization of projects and of home major funding. One of the concerns and questions was, how do we deal with neighborhoods that may be eligible for funding through community development block grant or other projects, but are non-contiguous to the main areas of the community? So with your permission, we would add reference to non-contiguous neighborhoods, including Eldorado Park, Kernentown, Highway City, Manchester, Pinedale, and other neighborhoods that are not contiguous to those main CDBG eligible and low-income eligible target areas. Additionally, there were questions on how the priorities were created, so I wanted to address those very briefly. As you know, a strategic... As you know, a strategic planning process involves a series of steps. So you collect all of the data, so that's the very first section of the plan. What are all of the needs in the community? And then how does the community feel about them? We had a consultant here at the beginning of May who talked about the process. We went out to neighborhoods, we had four community forums. At those forums, there were seven different pages of information where the community ranked their priorities and talked about what was important within each of those seven category areas. So it was really a summary that's listed on page 26 of the draft plan that really talks about what were those priorities within those areas. And then we take those priorities and we roll them up into the four major strategic visioning, which include the preservation and the creation of affordable housing, so development, preservation, rehabilitation of affordable housing for low-income and special-needs households, provide assistance for homeless and those at risk of becoming homeless, provide assistance to low-income and special-needs households, and to provide facilities improvements to strengthen neighborhood revitalization. Those four really summarize all seven of those pages that the neighborhoods and the community members who participated ranked and talked about as priorities, and really rolls it up in a way that it provides a comprehensive priority for all of the types of funding that could be used. And when there's not funding allocated in each annual action plan out of these four federal programs, it doesn't mean that we stop trying to address those needs. The city applies for grants through the parks, as my cohort, Mr. Molinado, said earlier, through the Prop 1(c) program, we assist with that, and providing information, $1.3 million this year for housing-related parks programs. There are other programs that we participate in through the city where we assist other agencies and we leverage the funds that we have. Another grant that we receive internally is our waste tire remediation grant, allows us to get those tires off the side of the road and allows people to bring those in so that they're not left. And then how do we address greater economic opportunity? As you recall, a week or so ago, you approved the Section 3 plan for the city, which allows us to really ensure that our contracting creates jobs. In addition, economic opportunity and job creation and services are really, roll up under assistance to low-income and special-needs households in our prioritization. So it is included in that. In terms of an analysis of impediments to fair housing, we do have an AI, and it was created in 1996. It's amended each time we do our housing element, so we address it, we look at it, what has changed. Our anticipation is, when the housing element is adopted by the city this year, that we would go through the process of creating a new analysis of impediments beginning next year. In terms of down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers, we have the Cal Home program that we utilize, and those funds can be used for first-time homebuyers as well as for mortgage assistance. We have approximately
$2 million.
About $2 million that we're allowed to use through that particular program, and that is leveraging the other monies that we're using in these four programs, in CDBG, ESG, and HOPWA.
Can I interrupt you right there?
Yep.
So those $2 million are out of what funding?
Cal Home.
Cal Home.
So it's through the state. It's listed in the strategic plan, in the con-plan, and in the annual action plan as additional resources that we utilize to address assistance to low-income and first-time homebuyers.
How many, do we know how many we were able to help this last fiscal year through Cal Home?
We can get you that information.
And we've expended that, that's the $2 million that was allocated for this last fiscal year?
Each year, there's a certain allocation that we receive, and the state extends that as long as we're spending the money. Statewide, it isn't heavily utilized, so there's always that resource available. There isn't a true expiration, we can just extend it as we need it. But it is a really great resource and allows us to use our other home dollars and our CDBG dollars longer.
14 were completed this year.
Okay, 14 were completed this year.
So do we have money left over out of the $2 million?
We continue, that will continue for another couple of years until we've expended all of those funds. So anybody that you know that's a low-income or first-time homebuyer that's attempting to purchase a home, please get in touch with our office so that we can assist them through that process. It does take a little longer than a normal mortgage, because you're really getting two mortgages. You're getting your mortgage through the bank, and then you're getting your assistance, your down payment assistance through Cal Home. So there's two mortgages. It does take a little bit longer, 45 to 60 days to get through the process. The home has to pass special inspection to make sure that it's affordable for that individual to live there. Additional questions that were raised were in regards to additional affordable housing creation. Obviously, over the past few years, we've really focused on creation of new affordable housing, in particular rental housing. On June 4th, we had a presentation, there was a lot of information thrown out, but in 1314, we created 380, or leveraged 381 new rental units, and in 1415, 288. So for a total of 669 new affordable rental units were leveraged in those two fiscal years. And then there was a question regarding the former RDA's property, properties that they own that are housing-related properties. Those are listed on pages 126 and 127 of the consolidated plan. And then in terms of the Section 108 loan, there were actually three projects that were completed, including improvements on the regional medical center, senior center, a senior center, and a streets and parks improvements within CDBG areas. So those are our Section 108 loans. We have a number of years still left on that, and we can get you the specific information on how long we have left on Section 108. But those are some of the main questions that were raised. Again, the strategic plan really focuses on those four main priority areas that I referenced previously, and really looks at how do we protect investments that have already been made, our homeowners, our facilities and our neighborhoods, and how do we preserve our neighborhoods as they are today? So with that, I would be happy to answer any additional questions, but those were questions that were raised when I met with many of the councilmembers this week.
All right. Now, we'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Soraya.
So I do first want to express my appreciation. I know that I've had tons of questions, and that a lot of those questions that you just answered were questions that I had submitted to you. Thank you for meeting with me and answering many other questions that I had in regards to the consolidated plan. I know that the plan is kind of a, just more of a general plan for the next five years in terms of some of the issues and needs that exist in our community. Thank you for explaining kind of the overall community needs. I know that out of the seven that were identified in the plan, there were four that we seem to really be focused on in terms of increased parks and green space, affordable rental housing, increase for services for the homeless, and increased community services. And so I know that the action plan then delineates how we will spend the dollars that we do get. But I do still have just maybe some, a couple of questions that you can clarify. I know that we talked about the housing element, because I did submit a question regarding an analysis of impediment of fair, affordable housing. And so we are in the process of creating the housing element, or where are we at? What's the timeline?
So the housing element, we have the, initially started the data collection that's required to prepare the housing element. It is due by the end of the year to HCD, Housing and Community Development Department of the State of California. We anticipate coming back to the city council in the fall with a draft housing element. As you recall, when the general plan was adopted last December, we had a housing element consistency chapter, which just showed that our current housing element is consistent with the general plan and the overall priorities of the city. We will be adopting a new housing element this fall, which will be essentially an amendment and rolling into the general plan. And from that, we'll have the data that we need to begin a new analysis of impediments that we can use for our next consolidated planning process.
And is the community involved in the development of the housing element, or how does that work?
There will be some public input that will be, will have some public meetings, but we'll also have some opportunities for action and, or for input on the draft, as well as input on the creation of the draft. So there will be a number of opportunities for the public to participate in the creation of the housing element.
Okay. And then going back on to the information that you provided on the down payment assistance, and I ask this because I think that this is a very important program. I do believe that there's a number of people in our community that could benefit from this program. So I know that we have $2 million allocated out of Cal Home money. I was kind of thinking, you know, if it was valuable to have some matching dollars out of the funds that we get through CDBG and the home funds out of this, out of what we're talking about in the consolidated plan. But it seems to me that there is $2 million right now coming out of Cal Home. Why is it that we only have 14 completed? How much money do we have left? Like, I know that you said that the process is kind of difficult.
It is, it's a longer process than a standard. I just go out, pick a home, get a loan, and move in. So in addition to the underwriting eligibility criteria, there are additional inspections that are required, additional underwriting and leveraging. Sometimes homebuyers or sellers aren't as willing to work through that process, because they have somebody who can close in 30 days versus 60 days. So it just takes a little bit longer, but I think we haven't advertised the program as well as we could have. And I think that that's something that we can work with your office and the other council offices to make sure that the councilmembers know that the program is available, and what are the eligibility criteria, so that when people ask, hey, I'm wanting to buy a house, I've been renting, here's the process for which to buy a home.
How much do individuals get for assistance? Do we know?
And one of the problems, as well as Cal Home, start with 50,000. 50,000, up to 50,000, is for mortgage assistance, which also includes closing costs. With Cal Home, it's restricted to certain ZIP codes, and so you have to evaluate the housing stock within that ZIP code to really see what's available to the particular target group.
So could we get a, do we have a map of maybe where?
We'll get you a map of where those are, and we'll get you the eligibility criteria so that you know and you can start promoting it. However, we have petitioned Cal Home on a couple of occasions. We will petition again to make it citywide, because we think it's really important to have it available citywide. There are some income criteria, but I think that we can work through that to ensure that our residents are able to purchase homes within the city limits where they would like to purchase homes.
Okay. That would, yeah, that would
Yes, I will make sure that all of you have
That would be great. Do we have a goal in terms of a year, how many we're trying to do?
We don't have a goal. We would, obviously, we'd like to spend as much money as we can.
Okay. Maybe that would be a good thing that we do. We try to set some targets. I know that most recently, the administration did a big press really, or big press event with Wells Fargo, and they had like a down payment assistance program that they did, maybe trying to figure out if we can do something very similar, if we are lacking in advertising these funds. It seems like this is a great program for someone to receive $50,000. That's a lot. I'm going right now through the process, and, you know, something like this could benefit someone that, you know, is looking at buying a home, but necessarily doesn't have the monies for the down payment and closing costs, which can get expensive, or, you know, even some of the inspections that come with buying a home. So, you know, I think this is a great program, and we need to do, you know, a little bit more work in terms of advertising. I'm happy to help. I know that there may be some neighborhoods in my area that, you know, people could qualify, and so, you know, I want to be, make sure that you guys consider me a partner in this. So let's work on this to make sure that we get these funds out to our residents. The other thing that I wanted to mention, I know that the action plan will delineate the fundings to various programming. One of the things that I am very interested in, and I want to see that we do a little bit more, I know that we do preservation rehab with a lot of the funds that are provided, but I would like to see us really do a little bit more of affordable housing and increase the stock, because it seems as one of the, one of the needs that was pointed out, it said increasing the affordable rental housing inventory was another extremely high priority and need within the city. And I do believe that now with the elimination of the targeted areas and really allowing other areas of the city to maybe do some potential projects. So I would like to see, I know that the current action plan for this year doesn't do much of that, but I would like to see in the next years, the following years, that we do allocate some of those funds and leverage with some of the other funds that exist, the 20% set aside money, if there's any, and some of the other sources of funding that we could leverage to do affordable housing program, affordable housing projects throughout the city of Fresno. I know that there's been a concentration in certain districts. I know District Three has gone a lot of projects, and I'm of the belief, and I know that we had a previous conversation here on the dais a few weeks ago about the need of spreading some of the affordable housing and wanting to see affordable housing in other districts that don't have those, and doing mixed, I think mixed income is what really going to be beneficial. So I think thinking outside of what we've been traditionally doing is going to be very important. So I would really encourage you guys, I want to make sure that I am much more active next, in the next cycle, in terms of the action plan and how we allocate some of the dollars, because it has been identified as a great need, and we know that there's a great need in our community for affordable housing stock, and not just, you know, in some of the more impoverished areas, but I'm saying in some of the more middle to higher-income areas where we can do some potentially mixed, mixed-income housing. So I will encourage that. The other issue that I just wanted to point out was, I know that we talked about economic development, and that was a medium priority, because I believe Councilmember or President Oliver Baines mentioned it in his, in his points about doing more for like employment training for our working-age people, and I know that that was more of a medium priority as identified by, you know, the feedback that you guys got from the community. I will say that we already have, we've created, I know the council has created some programs to encourage economic development and to incentivize businesses to come, which is, which I think is great. I'm actually part of the I Differ Committee, and I know that it's not part of the consolidation plan, but maybe something that we want to reference in our consolidated plan, some of the programs that we already have, to identify those and point those out. But I would actually suggest, and I will be bringing forward this in the coming weeks and maybe in the month, I want to work with the administration and here with my colleagues in really bolstering our I Differ program, where we look at, you know, this program, just for those folks that don't know, allows reduction and/or waiving a certain impact fees through criteria of job creation. And so we have this program to try to incentivize industrial development and really bringing jobs to our community. But I think that here we have a real great opportunity to help really meet the needs of greater economic opportunity for our residents of Fresno, in really looking at some of the disadvantaged neighborhoods by providing maybe either additional investment or if it's waiving a fee, if we're really going to waive 100% of their fees, that they show us that they're hiring actually residents from Fresno. I think that that's important. If we're going to be waiving fees for people that are coming into our community under the the argument that they are creating jobs, let's make sure the residents of Fresno are the true beneficiaries of these, of the fact that we are waiving fees. So I think that we can point to these programs that we already have within our city to be part of this plan that is much more comprehensive. And really, you know, I look forward to working with the administration and trying to bolster these programs that we have so that there is true benefit for the residents of Fresno. And so I have some ideas in terms of how we can show that folks are really looking at hiring people that are either identified in some of these zip codes that are lower income, you know, some of these targeted areas. So I think that there's an opportunity to work together to really make sure that our Fresno residents are benefiting when we are waiving these fees, you know, under the argument that they're creating jobs.
And that's an excellent point. I'm glad you brought that up because we hadn't pointed that out, that we did include that on page 110 of the Redline version, the I Differ Program. And so excellent point, and I think we can highlight that more, that this is an opportunity for us to leverage job creation through these contracts. And we do need to include, I'm really glad you pointed that out, our Section Three commitment on that particular page as well.
Yeah, so that's, I look forward to, you know, possibly sitting down with you guys, Bruce, to looking at how we can strengthen that program to ensure that our residents are benefiting. The other thing that I mentioned when we last met regarding some of the questions in terms of kind of economic development, job creation, and how we utilize these monies to ensure that our residents are truly benefiting from it and really maximizing. One of the issues that I brought up, maybe potentially working with some of the trades and doing pre-apprenticeship programs through some of these rehab dollars where people from the neighborhoods are actually benefiting when they're going out. And so I think there's a potential opportunity to work with the trades. And so I don't know if it's a matter of us creating a policy or sitting down or how we go about in working this. And I'm happy to meet with you guys to create a policy where we, you know, ensure that some of these dollars that are being set aside for, or they're being allocated for rehab and constructions of house are really benefiting some of these programs that already exist. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. There's already a welfare to work program that the trades are working with the WIB. And so there's a great opportunity for us to maximize, obviously, residents from Fresno will be able to get a nicer house with the rehab or a new house. But then we also have people from the community getting trained and actually learning a trade. And there's a real great benefit to that. So I think that incorporating into these funds would be a great thing for our community. So if it's a matter of creating a policy, maybe we can sit down or something that we can just do in having a conversation with the trade, with the trade programs that they have now and how we incorporate them is something that I would like to see done and hopefully in this next fiscal year.
Yeah, okay. The administration, we've already engaged with the trade unions.
Okay, good.
So that'll go hand in hand with some of the conversations that are already occurring.
Perfect.
And so with the WIB, and as I shared with you, the Parks Department took advantage of that program, and we see this would be an opportunity for us to expand on and meeting our Section Three requirements. So we look forward to working with the trades on creating that apprenticeship program because as we've also discussed, high speed rail is also being challenged with finding skilled craftsmen who can do things from welding to fabrication to concrete and that kind of stuff. And so there's a lot of opportunities out there that we're gonna take advantage of.
Well, thank you, and I'm encouraged to hear that those conversations have started. So I definitely appreciate that. Those are all the comments and questions that I had. Again, you know, thank you for bearing with me. I know that I asked a lot of questions, and I definitely appreciate you guys sitting down and trying to explain the different sources of funding. It's definitely alphabet soup with all these different pots of funding, and so I definitely appreciate all the information.
Councilmember Brandell.
Hey, Jennifer. I really just wanted to say thank you. Postponing this meeting till today was partially my responsibility because I didn't completely understand a couple of things that I needed to. And you met with me offline, and Joe came in and met with me. So, and then also Bruce, and I even got some help from Council District Three over here working through this process in my mind. So I want to say I'm not completely there yet. I'm trying to understand more and more about these programs like Councilwoman Soria was just talking about. My goal is to be there by this time next year so I can get a better grip on it. But in the meantime, you are helping me. I appreciate that part. I really like your guidance in helping us get rid of the geography requirements so that if somewhere, somebody, an individual around the city has the type of needs that these programs can serve, they can get the help, whether, surprisingly enough, if they're in North Fresno. And so I also like the way that you highlighted, you mentioned Highway City, Herndon Town, and Pinedale. In Herndon Town, through this process, you helped me, you actually were the one that formulated a way of helping a group of folks in Herndon Town that I've heard from continually or successfully about hooking up to city sewer. And they were just in dire straits, and you found a way through one of these programs to help. So I appreciate that as well. And I appreciate Joe and Crystal, you guys plugging away, keeping us informed. And so my goal is to get more informed by this time next year, but I really do appreciate the help that you've given me offline trying to wrap my head around these programs. Thank you.
Councilmember Brand.
Thank you, Council President. Thank all the staff. I know I met with Jennifer, Bruce, and Joe for meeting with us and explaining your program. And I met with Ashley Warner and Letitia Corona. Thank you for your time and your input. You know, some of the issues that came to me was, and I was part of this five years ago, right? Every five years. I had such an impression on it, I forgot about it. But my point being, I think sometimes what I've seen from several years on a planning commission and on this council for seven years is sometimes we just go through the motions, putting these things together. And I'm not trying to undermine any of the hard work that was done because the task at hand is so enormous to try to, you know, quantify and identify all these huge problems in a community that has a high level of poverty and certainly has major needs that, and I don't really have the answer yet, to really find a way to dig into the details and actually, you know, go and find solutions that, and again, we have had some, but I think we can make improvements on it. One of the comments or critiques was inadequate outreach. And Jennifer, could you speak to the outreach program?
During the month of March, we spent a significant amount of time with our consultant and their outreach contractor to reach out to the community, to reach out to agencies, which is a requirement of the plan to hold a number of community forums in different places and different times of the day and week. We held a Saturday forum. We held three weeknight forums. We had over 100 people attend those forums, and we had online survey, paper survey that were available. Councilmember Cabrillo attended two of the forums. I had input from other council members who either couldn't attend or who attended a portion of a forum. The outreach was really extensive and significantly more input than we had five years ago. The Chair of HCDC expressed that at our meeting on June 2nd and said, you know, he had been there five years ago, and this was just so much bigger and better than what we've done before. Obviously, there's always room for more outreach, and we have committed through HCDC to include three languages instead of just two in future action plans and consolidated plans to ensure we're really reaching an even broader segment of the community. This was a huge step in terms of outreach. We had over 400 of the surveys that were submitted. Our contractor met with numerous agencies in the community to really understand the needs of their constituents and their client bases, to make sure that we really built, as I said before, the strategic plan from the base, not just the needs, but the priorities, and then roll them up into these four major categories for funding.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think I do recognize a better effort this year. I still think, you know, in some of the communities, it's really hard to get people engaged. And it's the old saying, you can lead a horse to water, it can't drink. But in the future, my only suggestion would be to go more into the heart of the community, maybe reaching through certain, you know, neighborhood leaders and finding ways to encourage the turnout and the input. And the other thing that struck me was, you know, the large number of people in Fresno that don't speak English. And, you know, I think, I don't know what we can do about trying to find ways to, through our school system, through adult education, to even our community centers, is offering English classes to people because if you can't speak the language, it's an economic barrier that'll hinder anybody and their advancement on their careers and this their overall earnings potential. So, and this is something that's probably bigger than just the city of Fresno, but I think I'd like to at least have us look at ways to do more expansive education and particularly, if you get somebody that understands the language, then I think you're gonna get better participation on these workshops. So that's my suggestion. The other item was to identifying and leveraging private, state, and federal sources for funding. And I think we could do more along those lines because we're just always at the kind of the bottom of the list on the grant funding, just all the traditional sources, CDBG and so on. And it's never, ever going to be enough to really make a huge dent into what we have to do. And I know the general fund is a possibility, but we are so stretched, we had this debate over the last two weeks on all the overwhelming needs on that. So, you know, I mentioned this earlier about foundations, but these are just a few of the items, through the organizations, a little researched. And most, these are more geared towards economic development, but they would apply. And some are existing, underutilized sources like new market tax credits. Others are what I call emerging fund sources, Community Development Finance Institute, community organization networks, which are called, these are like acronyms, COIN, Community Reinvestment Act, Infrastructure Assessment Districts, which I believe they recently lowered the threshold, just a few of several out there. And then we get into this dilemma that I had for my first year was, I think we have a, what consultants are grant writers? So does police has a grant writer, fire has a grant writer, general services, you know, am I right on a current model? So the question would be, should we consider a new model? Maybe just one citywide department or group with a director and whatever number of staff are necessary, and is to go through and sift through all the, more aggressively and more organized, all the potential funding sources, somebody that's listed here, to find better ways to leverage, identify. And I don't know if this is the answer, but I'm just throwing some stuff out there that I've seen that I think could be improved and would potentially add a lot more money to address the enormity of the problems we have. And on affordable housing, and I've said this many times before, we are one of the lowest levels of rents or home prices in the state of California. And really, actually, go to places in back, you know, back in the middle of Arkansas or Missouri, you know, you're gonna find Fresno is just kind of a, even compared to Modesto, Bakersfield, we are really low on our rates. And I've managed, you know, full affordable housing tax rate of properties where, you know, there's people down to 20, 30% of the AMI, and they're, you know, they're paying like $300 a month, and that, not even a PGE payment in some places. So, but the problem really, really is, is wages. It's just a city of underemployed, undertrained, making eight, nine, $10 an hour. And that's probably okay for, you know, teenagers, part-time, but for adults that have to do that, it's really hard to find the money to sustain for affordable housing, you know, not only to rent, but to buy. And it's almost like a, you know, you're aligning, you know, and for this to work, you've got to align market forces because I've said this before too, that the business model that we have just doesn't work. We had the RDA for several years, and most of the projects, like the Granville did on a housing project, were typically 25 to 30% subsidized by either outright grants, interest-free loans, and all kinds of different infrastructure. And they still didn't show a net return on investment. And now that that element, tax increment, is still potentially alive, but it's pretty much, as we had it, is gone, we've got to find, you know, new sources to leverage that because, you know, you go out there and, and a good example really is Hotel Fresno that I know probably more than anybody else. 2011 Hotel Fresno was, this is what, it didn't work. It was a rehab, it was, which really substantially adds the cost of, with environmental problems and earthquake seismic stuff, and this didn't work. And the new buyers that are coming in were much smarter, and as you saw in the paper today, they identified, I think, $4.8 million in cap and trade money. Because we fit all the categories in the cap and trade, every one of those programs. City of Fresno, unfortunately, because it's all low income, housing problems, air quality problems, we are gonna qualify. And those guys are getting, I think they're still around for new market tax credits, but it's a $20 million project. They're probably gonna leverage in with the grants and credits probably over, over at least 50% or more of the property. So their loan is gonna be somewhere in the $4 or $5 million range. By contrast, the original proposal had a loan of about $10 or $11 or $12 million, which is highly leveraged, would have never worked. This is a good example of using these existing and emerging funding sources out there to find ways to build and meet our housing element. And on the density deal, and I go back to my days in the planning commission when we had, you know, we were going like R2, R3, we were upgrading R4. And to my knowledge, I don't think there's too many projects outside of downtown that are taller than three stories as far as residential city manager. There's maybe one or two outside of downtown that are over two stories. And that's the challenge because it's the cost, and you start going three, four stories, your metal frame construction versus wood, hydraulics, all kinds of cost issues. Doesn't mean it can't be done. And the only other thing I like about that too is it tends to give the institutional look. It looks like we've become projects, it's, you know, four, five-story blocks versus maybe having something not as dense, but is more aesthetically pleasing and, you know, has an economic model that's more feasible as far as building. I'm just finding, looking for real world solutions to this problem that persists here in a city. And finally, it just, whole, you know, dilemma of affordable housing versus market rate housing. Because if we continue what we do, we've had such an overconcentration of affordable housing, particularly in southwest Fresno, where it becomes, you know, just ties into this generational cycle of poverty that you're never gonna get out of that. And then if we can find ways through innovative sources to encourage people, lift people, give them jobs, you know, they finish school, then they can start buying their own houses in southeast Fresno, in southwest Fresno. They can basically lift themselves in this city out of the perpetual cycle of poverty. So again, I understand all the needs for now, but we have to find, I think, a balanced strategy that gives people the opportunity to lift themselves and improve their lives.
Thank you, Council President.
All right, thank you. I'll just make my comments brief. I'm glad we have an annual action plan. I think it's probably a better product now than when it started. So thanks to all the staff work and everything that went into this. I'll have some, a few more comments when we get, I'm sorry, I'm in the consolidated plan. I'll have a few more comments when we get to the annual action plan. Do we have, I don't recall us having a motion for this item, so I'll make a motion that we approve the annual action plan. I'm sorry, consolidated plan. See, I'm already on the annual action plan, so. I know, right? So I'll make a motion that we approve the consolidated plan, the 2015, 2019 consolidated plan. We have a second by Councilmember, Councilmember Soria. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed. All opposed? Item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Brandow absent. Okay, now we will move on to clearly what is dominating my thoughts here is the annual action plan, if we have staff.
Good morning. Jennifer Clark, Development and Resource Management. So again, some of the questions and comments that have been raised over the last few weeks, we had a presentation on June 4th. We had additional discussion on June 11th, and we are here today for the adoption of the annual action plan. Based on input from the council, we have removed, again, those priority target areas for major home projects and prioritization of applications from our NOFA's. But I would also ask your indulgence, as stated earlier this morning, to duplicate what we will place in the consolidated plan, including adding reference to the non-contiguous neighborhoods, including Eldorado Park, Herndon Town, Highway City, Manchester, and Pine Dale. That allows for that additional potential for just saying that, you know, in addition to those neighborhoods of concentrated poverty in the center of our community, there are these additional non-contiguous neighborhoods that could be prioritized in future years and future projects. Again, all of the activities that are identified in the action plan all roll up into the consolidated plan that you just adopted. And these include the four key goals, safe and affordable housing, homelessness and the prevention of homelessness, community services, public facilities, and public improvements. And these are all identified as priorities in the consolidated plan. And so all of our annual action plan focuses on that. Additionally, this year, to balance out, we've spent a lot of time over the last five years really creating affordable housing. We talked about it in our presentation on the 4th, over 1,000 units have been leveraged for a creation of new rental housing. We haven't focused a lot on preservation of our existing housing stock. And so this particular annual action plan really focuses in preservation of affordable housing through assistance programs, which we'll, can talk about in a little bit. But mainly, those are focused on grants. That was a big conversation with the council. Do we do a loan? Do we do a grant? Do we do a deferred forgivable grant or loan? So we really focused down into grants. And another piece was identifying additional funds for our senior paint program, which is minor repair and senior paint, all exterior kind of work. But really preserving the existing housing stock that we have is one of the greatest tools that we have to prevent further decline in our neighborhood. So that's really a focus on preservation of facilities, of housing, and of services within our established neighborhoods to ensure that we can protect those neighborhoods, we can then start to promote new investment in those neighborhoods. So without, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, come on down, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Chris Schneider. I'm with Central California Legal Services. And I am not, I just want a comment on the, what has become the procedures on the CDBG funding over a number of years here in the city of Fresno that I think delivers some unintended messages. But those messages are delivered nonetheless. And that is, the city's not interested in working with a lot of not-for-profits. Because each year, applications go out, not-for-profits are asked to submit proposals. Many of us submit proposals. The HCDC spends a lot of time studying those proposals and making recommendations in which almost every year, they make recommendations for a number of not-for-profits to be funded. And generally, what happens is the not-for-profits get left out of the budget. And I know that the city's dealing with very difficult budgets. But I think the unintended message that's going to the not-for-profits is, we're not interested in working with you, and that the work of the HCDC and all the time and effort that they put into making those recommendations is ignored, and it's, their work is unappreciated. So I hope that in future years, the not-for-profits will be paid more attention to. Thank you.
All right, do we have any comments, any other comments from the public? See, none. I'll bring it back to the DIA's Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jennifer, thank you for meeting with me this morning, and Mr. Trujillo as well. Appreciate it. You know, and basically what we're hearing is what we talked about this morning, as far as looking at utilizing some of those monies for families to actually live in a house. And, you know, I still support the idea of maybe working with folks like Habitat for Humanity to build those houses that they select the property owner, they, the family has to commit to 40 hours a week minimum of building the home, working on the home. And then Habitat works with them on the financing and their budgets on how to continue to afford them. And it just seems like, you know, we've, we're building more apartments and that type of thing rather than the actual housing that'll stabilize a neighborhood. And to me, I believe that it's more working with those organizations that can do the work of infill, where you have only a couple lots in a neighborhood that have been there vacant for years. Well, you can get a home on there and have a family and create that stability. And the, I know we did that in the mid-'90s in southeast. At that time, we worked with SelfHelp, and they worked in a cul-de-sac. And they're still, the families are still there, the houses are maintained, and just, you know, it just continues to thrive in that area. You drive through there and it's clean, you know, there's no inops, the yards are kept up. And like I said, the families are still there. So I really, you know, would like to see that you can look more into working with those nonprofits that can work with the families to keep them there and stabilize them. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Soria.
Just a couple comments in regards to the actual action plan. So I hear some of the, or I hear the comments made by Chris from CCLS in regards to the process for nonprofits this year. I will say that I had a number of nonprofits contact my office. I do believe that there's value in us working with some of the nonprofits and how we allocate some of these CDBG funds. So I would propose, and hopefully if there's support from the council, I'm not sure how I would do this, but I know that currently in the action plan, we've allocated $500,000 that are set aside in case we have to do a payback because of the code enforcement and trying to just make sure that we did comply. So I would propose that those $500, once we've-
$500,000.
Or 500, I mean, $500,000. Once we get the clear from the feds that we are good, that we create a process where nonprofits can come to us and they can apply for some of those funds. So that's what I would propose in terms of, they're not allocated for anything else right now within our current action plan. And I think that there's an opportunity for us to show that we want to continue to work with our nonprofits and strengthen some of the programs that they already provide that would fall under what the consolidation, consolidated plan has outlined. So that would be my proposal. Do I have to make a motion to put that on the action plan, or how would that work?
Can I offer a quick suggestion? Maybe what we can do is you can make the motion that when the amended action plan comes back, that that's a contingency item. Can we do it that way, City Attorney?
You could do that by motion or just asking for direction to do that later?
I think we want to have it codified in the next action plan, though, when it comes back.
What do you mean, when it comes back?
They're going to amend, yeah.
They're going to amend.
They're going to have to bring an amended action plan back.
Okay, perfect. So, yeah, if we can, if, I want to make a motion that when it comes back to be amended, that we look at if these funds are not, have to be, they don't have to be paid to the federal government, that we do create a process.
So we set them aside in a contingency?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
So is that a motion to approve the item with that as a condition?
Yes.
Okay.
And just similarly to, to what I discussed earlier in terms of my interest and what I see in terms of affordable housing, I would like to see, I know that in this, in the current action plan, we don't, we don't have as many dollars for the creation of affordable housing stock outside of some of the areas that we generally focused on. So I would like to see some of that. And so hopefully, in the next action plan, which I will attempt to be much more involved in, that we can allocate some funds for the purpose of that. I agree with my council colleague, Quintero, in terms of the value of having actual homes that people in working with, you know, if it's Habitat for Humanity, or figuring out some other way to ensure that folks are able to buy a home. And again, it goes kind of in line with what I mentioned earlier about doing a better job with the down payment assistance programs, so that residents from our community are truly benefiting and have the ability to have an affordable home. So with that, those are just my comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I don't have anyone else on the screen, so I'll make a couple of comments myself. So one of the comments I was going to make, Councilmember Soria covered it, really wanted to make sure as we go over the list of organizations that were funded, I just noticed that we really did a lot of internal funding. And we want to make sure that we're getting the resource out into the hands of our community partners. And some time ago, we were much better at doing that than we are now. And so that's why I'm certainly supportive of Councilmember Soria's movement to, if in fact, we have carryover or we don't have to pay back the entire $500,000, that we look at reallocating some of those funds to some of our community partners that were missed in this particular, this particular funding cycle. But more importantly, what I'd like to do is to make sure that in the future, that as we bring more plans back, annual action plans in the future, and our community partners are putting in proposals, that we are much more mindful of how we get the dollars to them upfront. So while I think this is a great, a great, a great move for this year, I just think that we need to bake into the culture that we are partnering with our community better, so that we don't have to make motions from the DIA's to get that done. I just think we need a culture shift when it comes to that. So I'm hopeful, and I know we'll have a, we'll have an annual action plan in April. So I certainly will be looking, because my friend down there has guaranteed me we'll have it in April. So I certainly will be looking pretty closely to see how we are partnering with the community in a larger way. So thank you, Councilmember Soria, for that motion. I'm fully supportive. And, you know, really, I've said, I made a lot of comments on both the consolidated plan and the action plan, annual action plan for, you know, several months. So, you know, not to belabor any of them, I'm really going to be looking for action at this point, implementation. So I can't remember if I made the motion already to, and I know Bruce and I have talked about it, but I can't remember if I already gave the, made the motion of direction to have quarterly reports on our annual action plan. Okay, so that is already going to occur? Okay, so I don't need to make another motion to do that. Okay. So I wanted to make sure, because that's going to be, for me, the way that I'm checking to make sure that we are living up to our expectations. And we've now set some pretty high expectations. We expect a lot more in the, you know, in the very near future about how we are expending this resource and making sure that it's getting down into the hands of the community. So I'm happy about that. Finally, just some more specific needs. So I know we're going to have some carryover, a little carryover this year. And I have a community, a community group in my district that really went out on their own. I spoke about it during budget hearings as we were talking about all the discussion on parks, where I have a community group that actually went out and secured a park on their own, without, with very little help and assistance from us. They mobilized their own community, they mobilized the residents, and they wrote a grant, they won a grant, and they are now going to put in a park out in the Almy and Roy area. And it's fantastic, because no one gave them a whole lot of credit, but it's another park that's coming up in our, in our community, and they did it on their own. Which, you know, really, for us as policymakers, that's exactly the type of thing that we want to be supportive of, when groups get together and on their own and don't ask for any real help from us and go out and do it. So they are, I'd like to move some of our carryover funds, $200,000, to help them with the base and basic equipment and landscaping and installation costs. So they have a few more outstanding costs, they're about $200,000 short, but they've done everything else. So what I'd like to do is see the use of these funds to help them with their, with their final needs, because they're going to be maintaining the park on their own. They, they're going to, they've done all the work. So I'm hopeful that we can find a way through CDBG to help them with the final, and I have a list, and I can provide you guys with the list, should this, should this pass. But I'm hopeful that we can find a way to help them with the final needs that they have on that, on that project. So, Councilmember Soria, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that you amend your motion slightly for those carryover funds to help, to help that particular park with that, with that community group. Would you be opposed to that? Okay. So I will amend, Councilmember, I will ask for the amendment of that to include, to include the carryover funds for the, for the park at Almy and Roy. Councilmember Capriolio.
I think, I think you mentioned that they will be able to maintain the park on their own without any city assistance. That's amazing. That's fantastic.
It really is a great success story that, quite honestly, we don't, we don't talk, we haven't talked enough about, that they came together and did it all on their own and going to maintain it. And they just need a little bit of help now.
I wonder if we can use that format for other districts in our city?
I will certainly put you in contact with them. They're fantastic. They're a great group, one of the, probably one of the best, better groups that I work with in my district.
And congratulate them on their success.
Yeah, they don't, they don't ask for very much. So thank you for that. I don't know. So with that, we have a motion and a second. No, sorry, I don't know. I seriously don't know. We'll make a motion, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you, guys. Doug, do I need to do anything else? Are we, do I need to do anything else for this?
You're good.
All right, meeting adjourned. Oh. We have one more?
At the 9:00 AM number three.
Am I moving too fast? Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a 9:00 AM number three. So we have a resolution for the 49th Amendment to the annual appropriations, the annual appropriations resolutions. My apologies. I told you, I'm just hyper-focused on the annual action plan. So anyhow, Joe, go ahead and hit.
Good morning, Council. Joe Trujillo, Housing Division Manager. The item before you for your consideration is an amendment to the annual appropriations resolution to rebudget $500,000 of community development block grant funds and $1.5 million of home investment partnership program funds for sub-recipient agreements with the Fresno County Economic Opportunities Commission. With this action, we can continue to work under an existing contract for previously approved activities. In October of 2013, the city council approved a contract with the Fresno County EOC to provide rehabilitation services. Those contracts were executed in April of 2014, and an extension of that contract was approved through December of 2015. This rebudget request is to bring FY 2014 funds into the current 2014-2015 budget year. These funds do not impact the proposed FY 2015, 2016 funding for the citywide rehabilitation program. With the approval of this amendment, we would encumber the funds by placing them on purchase order as soon as the annual appropriations resolution is adopted. Currently, we have 18 projects in construction phase, four applications that are currently under review, and we have a contact list of 20 homeowners who are interested in participating in the program. We anticipate to fully obligate these funds by- We anticipate to fully obligate these funds by December 30th of 2015. If there are any questions, we are available to answer them.
All right. Thank you. And I take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Soria.
So just a couple comments in regards to this item. I will say that I'm going to support this item today, but I don't want this to occur again, next, this next year, when we're back during this, this next time. And I know that we're committed to, we've got a commitment to ensure that we have the action plan come back in April. And I know that we, we are doing this because we did have to encumber the funds by the end of the fiscal year and ensure that we meet our timely deadlines. I, you know, I like Fresno EOC. I know that they're a fantastic organization. I actually was a part of their board before, and so I know that they do fantastic work in our community. But again, I think that, that hopefully next year, we're not in this situation, and we're actually getting the dollars out as we should have been. I just wanted to ask, I know that you mentioned that the dollars will be expended by December 30th. Do we have a plan to make sure that that happens? So that's one. And then two, maybe can you speak to how the program operates, like who they use, if they're using the local conservation corps, or how they go about to expend these dollars in these projects?
We've been working with Fresno EOC on how we move forward to the end of the year with projects. Now, some of the things that we need to do in-house, again, we're taking care of those things to get, to get our processes, our processes and the information to the Fresno EOC. Our goal is to, it has to be pretty aggressive between now and the end of the year. Again, we're looking at, looking at pushing five projects through, having active projects through, through each month until the end of the year. We do have designated projects now that we're looking at, that again, we want to be able to put on purchase order, so that we have the money set aside. But again, those projects, again, are to be, are to be in construction through the end of the year.
And so if the council members identify any potential projects in their district, they could come to you guys, and then you guys give that information to EOC, or how does that work?
No, no, yes, as a matter of fact. And again, that's something that we certainly want to do at the division level, is to work with the council, council offices much, much closer, to be able to understand where there might be specific areas or blocks or constituents that you would like to see addressed. And if you forward those, that information to us, we'll certainly make the effort. As a matter of fact, in Councilmember Olivier's area, we were forwarded a, an address of a constituent that we're going to make a visit out there tomorrow to see what we can do for that, for that citizen.
Perfect. So is there any way that you guys can send us, if there's a fact sheet in terms of the qualification, so that when we're out in the community, you know, we can kind of screen our constituent, or if we get a call, so that we know, we can identify them and then kind of do a pre-screen and then bring them to you guys, because we potentially know that they could qualify, so that we can help you guys meet the goals that we have?
Oh, yes. As a matter of fact, we just recently, within the last couple of weeks, we're going back over our programs to see how we can, and again, I've heard it a number of times about the outreach. We want our outreach to be continuous throughout the year. We want to be able to, I would personally like to be able to come out to the council districts, when you meet with your constituents, to be able to tell them about the housing programs. What we're really working towards in the end is coming up with something along the signs, along the same lines as Business Friendly Fresno, where we have informational packets to provide not only citizens, but those that we work with in the city.
Okay. Perfect. So those are just my questions in terms of, so if we can get just, you know, a little fact sheet regarding the qualifications, so we can also help you guys make sure that we meet our goals by December 31st.
Now, as a matter of fact, if we have something that works, I can give you a draft of that, and you can work off of that, certainly.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Could you, Joe, could you tell us which districts, these 18 projects and four applications, are located?
I, we don't have them broken down by district. That's something that we're in the process of doing, and that'll be part of our quarterly report, ongoing, not only the active projects in your areas, but also the application processes or applications that we have from your areas, but also the outreach that we're doing in your areas.
That would be greatly appreciated. Also, could you forward us these qualifications or the pre-screening documentation? Because I, I think all of us need that information to address the needs in our respective districts. And then, I'm sure you can do that for us. And then tomorrow, what are you looking for? You going to roll on out into the city of Fresno, look at a house?
Well, there's, there's actually, there's something that I'm trying to be more active about, is understanding the community needs throughout the, throughout the city. There are places that have been mentioned, Herndon Town and Highway City.
Eldorado Park.
There have been specifics, some specific addresses that we've been asked to take a look at. So I'm going to be working a lot closer with the rehabilitation supervisor, going out and looking in the neighborhoods, looking at specific addresses. There have been addresses that have, that have popped up in the past that needed, needed assistance, but we haven't really, I think, done the, done our due diligence in making sure that we're doing everything we can to help that citizen. So we've taken some of those. I know we have one in District Three that we're working on right now, that in the past has been a bit of an issue. So that, I think it's a little more personal touch that we're trying to place on what we do and how we, we're out there in the community and provide outreach.
Have we had outreach to Eldorado Park?
Eldorado Park.
Not yet. Can, I hope that's on our list of priorities. Thank you. And so again, tomorrow, you're going to go to this residence, and what, are there any particular things that you-
Well, it's, it's a-
That might help us understand the process.
It's a possible, it's a, it's a home that's been identified. Elderly citizen lives in the home, can't really care for the home herself. We know that she probably certainly needs senior paint, but there probably are other things that the property needs, because she's not able to care for the property herself. So those are the kind of things that we want to be able to go out and take a look at and assess, and see if there are other programs that we can, we can tie in. We're also in the process of tying in our sustainability efforts in how, how we might be able to leverage some of those, those activities in being able to reduce utility bills for those persons that we're working with.
Will that include in too, rehabilitation, or?
It, or for this specific, for this specific citizen that we're visiting tomorrow?
That'd be a good example.
It's mainly the exterior we're looking at right now, but we really don't know, because we haven't, we haven't seen the property yet. We know the exterior is in bad condition, certainly paint job, eaves, possible roof, but we don't know what the extent is on the interior. But again, she's, from my understanding, she's, she's a citizen in the '90s and just really doesn't have a whole lot of assistance to take care of the home. So we're trying to do, trying to see what we can do, and instead of just looking at the one program, the senior paint, to see what other, other programs she might be able to apply for. Or again, we might be able to help her with.
Good. Thank you very much.
And we will get you the list, again, of the programs and the criteria, and we'll make, make sure that happens, if not today, tomorrow.
And possibly the districts that you're working in now.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have any? You can make comment, Councilmember Soria.
Just wanted to make a comment. I know that I raised it in our last meeting when we were talking about budget regarding our monthly statement that we should be receiving from our CAO. So I just want to make sure that as a requirement, it helps ensure that the council is appraised of the current city's true financial status, so that we're able to make informed decisions in each council meeting. So I would suggest right now, since it seems most appropriate, we're going through the budget process, that funds that are anticipated and known are reported to the council. I know that there is a monthly statement posted online, and so we went and checked it out. It doesn't really give us detailed information, so I would request, for our purposes in terms of the council, that any anticipated funding, as well as potential funding, could be tracked for us. So I don't know if you guys want to include it as part of the financial, the monthly financial statement, but I would encourage that to be included for our information. So if you guys can, want to provide it directly to the council, or add it to the control's currently monthly statement, I would really appreciate that. So, thank you.
All right. I think we are still waiting for a motion on this item? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve? All right. So all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes seven zero. Thank you. Now we'll take unscheduled communication. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on the council on any item? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Meeting stands adjourned.
Well, I'm surprised.